Good evening and welcome to the Lompoc City Council Meeting. This is Tuesday, November 3rd. We're going to resume the council meeting from closed session. Let's see, city attorney?
Thank you. There was one item on the agenda that was discussed, but there was no reportable action taken.
Okay. And if you'll please rise for an invocation. Pastor Darren Hunt.
Let's pray. Dear God, tonight this council meets to take care of the business of running our city. I thank you for their willingness to serve and for their desire to call on you for help and strength. God grant to each member of this council wisdom, clarity, and leadership as they govern each matter before them tonight and as they continually strive to offer their best efforts in the public positions you've allowed them to hold. God, we also ask you to bless and provide for our community, those who are in need today and those who have plenty, those who are sick and those who are healthy, those who serve as well as those who are served. God protect and bless our police and fire departments as they serve to protect and bless this community. Encourage and strengthen our military members, those in harm's way and those supporting. Be with our healthcare workers, social workers, and everyone who serves in compassionate work. Thank you for all the freedoms and fortunes we enjoy in this nation and community. Bless us tonight and always as we live to bless you and all who cross our paths. We thank you and pray this in our Lord's name. Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, I have several presentations. Proclamation is going to be reading today. Let's see. We have someone from lung cancer awareness. Ah. Hi. You Kathy? Okay. Hi, nice to meet you. Okay, this is a proclamation for Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death in both men and women and in every ethnic group in the United States, whereas lung cancer takes the lives of more Americans each year than breast, prostate, colon cancer combined. Whereas 435 Americans die each day from lung cancer. Whereas former smokers and people who have never smoked comprise nearly 80% of the new lung cancer cases each year. Whereas more than 80% of the new lung cancer cases will be diagnosed at a late stage. Whereas lung cancer screening for those at high risk using CT scans is recommended and needs to be implemented across the country. Whereas funding for lung cancer research falls far short for that of other fatal diseases. Whereas lung cancer alliances dedicated to saving lives and advancing research by empowering the living, those living with the risk of lung cancer. Now therefore I, Bob Lingle, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim November 2015 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month.
On Thursday, November 12th, we're having a Shine a Light on Lung Cancer. It'll be our sixth one here in Lompoc. And the purpose of the Shine a Light on Lung Cancer is to raise lung cancer awareness to end the stigma that's associated with lung cancer. If you have lungs, you're at risk for lung cancer. It has nothing to do with smoking. More and more young women are being diagnosed with adenocarcinoma lung cancer, and they've never smoked. So it's important, if you take one thing away from this tonight, is that when someone tells you they have lung cancer, don't ask them if they smoked. They have a disease and they deserve the same compassion that other people get when they're told, you know, they tell you they have cancer. So thank you very much, and our event is open to the public. You're welcome to attend.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you Kathy. Next, we have Proclamation for Pulmonary Hypertension Awareness Month. Okay. This is Debbie Rainwater. Pulmonary hypertension awareness month. Whereas the health of our communities, people, in the foundation for the caring and productive society and to further rests with the ability to adequately treat and ultimately find a cure for individuals who are afflicted with an illness including pulmonary hypertension. Whereas pulmonary hypertension is a chronic, life-threatening lung disease marked by elevated blood pressure in the lungs. Whereas without treatment, pulmonary hypertension patients live an average of 2.8 years past the diagnosis. Whereas multiple treatments are available for pulmonary hypertension, but it takes patience on an average of nearly three years to be accurately diagnosed. This delays a diagnosis, this delayed diagnosis has not changed in the past 20 years. Whereas hypertension patients who are diagnosed early have a longer life expectancy, and whereas education can help with the early diagnosis and the finding for research and cures for this disease. Whereas Pulmonary Hypertension Association is a nonprofit organization that seeks ways to prevent and cure pulmonary hypertension and to provide hope for the pulmonary hypertension community through support, education, advocacy, and awareness. Now therefore I, Bob Lingle, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim November Pulmonary Hypertension Awareness Month in the City of Lompoc as mayor, and I also urge the citizens to recognize the seriousness of this disease and its meritorious work, and the meritorious work of the Hypertension Awareness Association. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Well, it's been four years since I was diagnosed, and as you can see, 2.8 years is the, you know, extension of life expectancy. My father also has pulmonary hypertension, sorry. It's been about 15, 20 years since he's been diagnosed, so for me, it's hereditary, which is kind of scary. I have two children, who we don't know if they will get the mutation, but we're hoping for a cure, and that's what we're trying to raise money and awareness from. Last month, we did have a 5K walk down in Santa Barbara, and we raised approximately about $20,000 to help for, find a cure, and we'll be doing another one next year, so hopefully we can get more people out there to help support the pulmonary hypertension. Thank you.
As many of you may or may not know, California employees are required to have an injury and illness prevention plan as part of their safety programs. The City of Lompoc Injury Prevention Plan includes a central safety committee with delegates appointed by the department heads. Representation for the 2015-2016 fiscal year includes members from each of the city departments with a mix of management and unrepresented, and of all employees. One of the programs developed in 2014-15 was an above and beyond award program where employees are nominated by their peers for actions above and beyond their normal work. The employees are going to be recognized this evening by Mr. Bob Wetzel.
Good evening, council, staff, and citizens of Lompoc. Tonight I'm here as the Chair of the 2015-2016 Safety Committee, and I'm very pleased to announce the awardees for this first quarter's safety above and beyond. And the nominations are, the first nominator was Molly Gerald, and she awarded, recommended Lee Eddy, the library administrative aide. Lee was nominated for reporting falling limbs near the entrance of the library parking lot to maintain a safe library for Lompoc library patrons. Second is Lorenzo Gonzalez, and he nominated Dana Drake, a senior water distribution operator. Dana was nominated for removing a stray gas can from westbound lanes of traffic to avert a possible accident to Lompoc drivers. Third nomination was by Pauline Snikloff, and I hope I pronounce that correctly. She nominated Julie Moore, the library technician one at the wastewater treatment plant. Julie was nominated for her work in providing safety data sheets and labeling for the wastewater department chemicals. She not only brought the laboratory into compliance, but also assisted with the plant chemicals as well. Next nomination was Marcelo Sagarla. He nominated Alice Riggs, Senior Custodian. Alice was nominated for dedication for keeping the City Hall facilities clean and thereby reducing possibility of illness during the flu season. The next nominator was Beth Wallace, and she nominated Leilly Tobacco, Danielle Sebring, Treasury Clerks. Leilly and Danielle were nominated for reporting a suspicious backpack left on the counter in the utility payment lobby. This was the process trained during workplace violence training earlier in the year. And the last nominator was Teresa Hernandez. She nominated Jennifer Scouton, Sherry Matthews, Jessica Fox, Diane Naharal, and Angelica Jimenez, Office Staff Assistants. While walking on a work break on Chestnut Avenue, they were able to restrain a dog, notify the owner, and return the dog to the owner so that it would not be injured. And those are our first quarter nominations. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, now we're going to have the city manager's report.
Mayor, my report's going to be a little longer than normal tonight, and as I look around the audience, I see probably a number of people that are here for other items. If you'd like to hold mine over toward the end of the meeting, I'd be fine with me. It's up to you.
I think they all came for your report. No, I'm just kidding. Okay, so we'll delay that. Let's move on to public comment. This is public comment on the consent calendar. Consent calendar is usually a number of items that are routine in nature and will be accepted and passed by one motion of the council unless that item is pulled by a council member. Does any council member choose to pull an item? Okay, seeing no one?
Mr. Mayor, we just want to make one clarification on one of the consent items.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to make clarification on a staff report for item number five. The staff report, it reads that the recommendation is to appoint Mr. Ron Stasi to the interim electrical utility manager position. We'd like to clarify the name as Ronald B. Stasi as opposed to Ron Stasi. That's the only change on that.
Okay.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
So we'll note that. With that noted, could I have a motion to approve?
Pam Wall, local resident, I'd like to address item number three on the consent calendar about the new policy, about posting agendas to the website. You know, the whole thing that prompted this was a mistake that we just can't admit that we made a mistake once in how many years? So we write a new policy. Do you really think that making every reasonable effort to post a final agenda is the intent, is legal? It certainly isn't the intent of the Brown Act, nor does it include, does it even encourage people to want to participate when they're treated like this? I would ask you to revise this and make it more in compliance with the Brown Act and the intent of the Brown Act and the legality of the Brown Act. I would have to agree with the editorial in the paper when it said, when they're writing up about this, that the, maybe they're writing about the Space Center, that the, that Brown Act should be rewritten and close the loopholes, and then send everybody to training to explain the Brown Act and the intent of the law. And then he may not be saying it metaphorically, but I will kind of remove all the doors at City Hall. We need to become more transparent, more inclusive of the residents in this community and your voters. And remember, we are voters, and some of us do pay attention, and we do want to be included in things that impact our daily lives. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wall. Anyone else? Okay, normally I don't do this, but just for clarification, this policy does completely abide by the Brown Act. As a matter of fact, the, we'll make every reasonable effort is, we'll make every reasonable effort to go above and beyond what the Brown Act requires. The Brown Act requires us to post the final agenda 72 hours in advance of a meeting. That is definitely, I mean, that is clearly stated in this policy that it says, but no later than 72 hours prior to the regular meeting, okay? What this policy is doing is it's saying, we're going to try, we're going to make every reasonable effort to go above and beyond that. We're going to try to have it posted five days in advance, so you have some extra time to review it. It also cleared up the issue we had with the difference between a draft agenda and a final agenda. Nothing in the Brown Act says anything about a draft agenda. We in the City of Lompoc choose to post a draft agenda, I believe it is 10 days in advance, 11 days in advance. We tried to post this draft agenda 11 days in advance so the public can have a little alert, be alerted as to what we're going to be talking about. Now, the mistake that was made, and yes, Ms. Wall was correct, it was a mistake, and we did admit we made a mistake. We didn't say we didn't make it. We admitted it several times. What this is going to do is it clears up the problem with the 72 hours. It definitely states in there, it's going to be posted in 72 hours, which our old policy did. It also says that in the event, for some reason, who knows why, another mistake, the wind blows down the sign, whatever, that that final agenda is not posted 72 hours, then the draft agenda that we posted 11 days in advance becomes the final agenda. That's what this policy says. So I appreciate your concern, but this policy absolutely complies with the Brown Act, and in fact, it goes above and beyond this. So with that being said, no council member chose to pull anything? Oh, anyone else cares to speak? Okay, then I'm going to close oral communication, bring it back to the council. I need a motion to approve.
I move we approve all five.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can we vote? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay. We're going to have a staff presentation now, but what is everyone here for? Let's see, probably for, let's see, I can't imagine what everyone's here for. Probably the museum. Is that what everyone was here for? Okay. Yep? Okay, well, let's go ahead, and we're going to have a presentation by our Public Works Department.
Hi, Mike Luther, a city engineer. We're just bringing back an item the council asked us to pursue, which was the, to try to find an interim pedestrian crossing for the Robinson Bridge. So back several months ago, we brought you, our consultant had reviewed six potential alignments, brought those back to you, and now the consultant has in-depth review of two of those alignments, the two preferred alignments, and he's here to discuss his findings. Here's Dave Schott with NV5.
Appreciate being back again to bring you up to date on our recent findings for this project. There has, we started out, well, the basic premise, of course, is to try to provide an interim solution for the bridge that's going to be replaced hopefully in 2034, '35. Currently, it's being used by a number of people from the Bridge House shelter, some parks, and possibly some bicyclists going through on 246. An existing bridge, of course, is narrow, has a 26-foot width, so if you have two 12-foot lanes, leaves you only a few feet to provide for bicyclists and pedestrians, and as you can see in this photograph, that there's a number of pedestrians on the bridge with the traffic, and I guess it's a fairly common occurrence as I understand it. So we previously studied six locations, one upstream that was found to be, require a much higher bridge because the existing bridge blocks the waterway when there's 100 or 50-year flows and the water elevations are five feet higher than downstream. And in addition to that, all the bridges will require to be higher with the new flood requirements under FEMA, so that upstream bridge would be much higher, would have to be longer, would require much larger fills, and we found it to be in a seismic fault zone. Jason, the Highway 246 bridge was also reviewed because of potential for scour effects on the existing bridge. That was also eliminated previously as a consideration, and so we ended up looking at two alternatives downstream as the most plausible options. And these are the six options originally looked at. The option at the very top is alternate six, that's downstream from the Highway 246 bridge, and alternate four, the other option looked at, which is parallel to the Highway 246, about 72, 100 feet downstream. The crossing downstream, alternate four, has some advantages in that it's closest to the existing alignment and requires a less travel distance than any of the other options. It also is one of the least expensive because of its lower and fewer construction requirements for embankments. It can remain in place during the future Highway 246 bridge replacement if that is necessary, at least providing bicycle and pedestrian access, and that bridge may be affected by the construction, so during construction, it may even be limited more than it is now as far as availability of space for pedestrians and bicyclists. After the new Highway 246 bridge is complete, however, that bridge is not going to be necessary if the bike lanes and sidewalks are constructed as part of the new structure. So the structure elements, the superstructure elements can actually be removed or they can be relocated to another location where they can be useful. However, this option, as well as alternate six, requires a pedestrian crossing at Sweeney Road for Bridge House residents, and currently Caltrans will not accept the crossing there, partly due to the speed they have posted, which is 55 miles an hour. They did suggest using a pedestrian undercrossing, but it has its own deficiencies and as well as added costs, which is fairly significant. So this is the concept, and this view in elevation is really distorted because we have a 10-foot, or 10-to-1 ratio of vertical to horizontal scale on this drawing, and the reason it's drawn this way is just to sort of emphasize the approach taken to minimize the length of the bridge so that we're not crossing the entire flood plain with a structure that would be much more expensive. It also shows how we're bringing down the slope at each end of the bridge so that it meets the approach slopes at 5%, allowing for handicap and ADA requirements, at the same time minimizing the effects of flood, the effects on the high-water conditions during the 50- and 100-year flow. But it does provide plenty of free board for the superstructure during those conditions, and it provides a structure type that's resistant to the effects of impact and even the removal if should it be so severe, although we would provide protection of the embankment approaches. Even if they were to wash away, the structure would still be there, and it would be a matter of replacing the embankments, not the entire structure, should you have a major flood that had that much effect, although we expect that the improvements to the embankments would probably protect it. So the actual structure looks more like this in a true horizontal and vertical scale, much lower, and it doesn't, this is not a distorted scale, it's the same scale both vertically and horizontally. The alternate six location would be similar, except at 700, 800 feet downstream. It provides a distinct location that's more easily viewed from Highway 246 should a prominent aesthetic-type structure be considered there. It also is closer to the park and might be considered as a connection to the Riverbend Park bikeway, Laurel Avenue and Seventh Street bikeways through an existing PG&E easement that's on the west side of the river. May work very well for long-term bikeway planning if that were, if these were considerations. Because it is a permanent structure integrated with the city bikeway system, funding may be easier to justify for this location. The disadvantages are that the river crossing is further from, would require a longer journey from Sweeney Road to Ocean Avenue, if that's the destination of the Bridge House folks. But origin destination study might be considered to determine where they're actually trying to get to in the city when they have to leave. My understanding is they have to leave at 8:00 in the morning, return again at 5:00 in the afternoon, so actually an origin destination study might have some effect in justifying this type of structure as well. There is an issue with the FEMA backwater conditions. Will have to be a little bit more evaluation done, but we think it's still feasible. The increase in backwater is a small amount, but it would have to be approved by FEMA. It will affect the boundaries of the flood plain, but it's not a major issue, except it does require additional surveying and hydraulic verification. In this case, again, a pedestrian crossing at Sweeney Road is not currently allowed by Caltrans. So this is the crossing, the interchange, it's Sweeney Road and the River Park Road as you approach it from the east. They do have it signed to indicate that are pedestrians in the area, but it's not a formal crossing, although it is a legal place for pedestrians to cross because it is a four-way intersection. And this is the type of signal that we proposed to Caltrans as a possibility. It probably shouldn't be used and certainly would not be considered by Caltrans unless the speed can be posted at 45 miles an hour instead of the 55. It's only activated when a pedestrian pushes a button on it, otherwise it's dark. There's no indication of any signal There's no indication of any signal function unless the pedestrian is going to cross. So it's not like a normal signal that's going green and red and yellow all the time. It doesn't control traffic at all unless the pedestrians, they're actually activating the signal. But again, Caltrans will not accept, or even consider, I don't know, they have been resistant to actually any type of signal at all, but certainly with the 55 mile an hour speed limit, they use the manual of uniform traffic control devices as the criteria to determine what the 85th percentile speed is, and that's the basis for the speed limit that's posted. It's pretty standard procedure throughout California and federally, that's pretty much the way things have been done. The, I've noticed that there is some possibility that there might be a reduction if we're evaluated because we did check with Caltrans, they nearly didn't do a speed check on this segment of the roadway between Highway 1 and Sweeney Road. So, but there is still an indication at Highway 1 that the speed, 85th percentile is somewhere around 55 miles an hour. My feeling coming across the bridge tonight was that I didn't want to be going more than about 41 miles an hour, but that's something that, a night issue that may not be the same in the day. So the Caltrans suggested use of a pedestrian undercrossing adds another cost for engineering with the 25% contingency, as we provided in other parts of the budget. It's another $1.9 million that adds on to the cost of the project, should the signal not be used. Creates a security risk for people who are inside the undercrossing, they can't be seen from the roadway. They will be subject to flooding every 25 years, so monitoring potential flood issues is even more important. You don't want anybody using that facility if there's suddenly an increase in the flood elevations. There would be a need for cleaning, sump pump maintenance, and there is a four-inch Southern California gas line, which is not high-pressure, so it's not a big issue, but it would have to be relocated if this option were ever a consideration. Each option will require an extension of the bike path from the river on the west side to Route 1. The one shown here is one that travels along the edge of the existing right-of-way. It would require some amount of drainage control, but we've included that in our budget. The other option is to actually place the two-way bike path adjacent the existing shoulder, and that was done at Route 1, where the Route 1 crosses the, right along here. The signs would be moved further away from the roadway, and a barrier, which was chain link used, was used at the crossing of San Inez River at Route 1. So it's not a standard procedure that Caltrans shows in their, or normally does, would use, but it's something that has been done in the past and is another consideration, would require less issues with regard to drainage. So this is what we end up now with the budget, with the total cost for construction with the 25% contingency right now is at 4.1 million, that's with the 25% contingency. When we add all the costs associated with design, environmental review, which did come up higher, geotechnical because of the special soil conditions in the river, we ended up with a total estimated budget with the signal of 5.5 million. But if you add in the cost of the undercrossing, we're up another two, so we're talking about 7.5 million dollars, pretty expensive for a temporary crossing of any kind. Alternate six is similar, only that it needs another couple hundred thousand dollars to extend the path from the 700 feet to Highway 246. So there are, of course, major funding consideration for something like this. Alternate four, estimated at the 5.5, the 7.5, depending on which option, is quite a bit, and it may be difficult to fund because it would be considered a temporary structure, at least as we're looking at it now. Alternate six with the 5.7 to 7.7 million and with the undercrossing. Funding for the permanent replacement bridge potentially could include active transportation funding, which is a new source of funding, not totally new, but a combination of sources of funding for pedestrian and bicycle bridges, it's just been put together in 2013. There's been two cycles of funding, they have so far been every year, somewhere, I think, between 120 and 180 million dollars statewide, which can be competed for, and those funds are strictly for bicycle and pedestrian improvements or planning. Expediting the permanent bridge replacement also becomes, I think, probably for you, a more, another consideration or competing consideration. We have actually had a project here recently where we did the design without any funding for the construction, and then because the design was completed and on the shelf, shovel-ready, when some unforeseen STIP funding came, became available, it was allocated to that project right away because it was ready to go. So that's something to consider. The ATP funding can be considered for the future bridge as well. The funding can be proportioned in proportion to the amount of the structure costs it's providing for the pedestrian and bicycle facilities, which would be the sidewalk and perhaps the widened shoulders, although that may be a disputable point because they might have, they would be replaced, widened in any event, but the sidewalks and the additional width of the bridge may be something that can be funded partially by the ATP funding resource as well. There are other funding sources in addition to the active transportation funding, however, it appears that most, if not all, relatively, for relatively permanent structures, and all funding is competitive. There's actually a cost-benefit ratio evaluation as part of the application process that has to be done, and so they, the people who are evaluating at Caltrans deciding who gets the money will be looking at those kind of things closely, that's a ratio of the number of people benefited versus the cost. The existing bridge is also classified currently as functionally obsolete, obviously because of the lane widths and also the barrier, and has a sufficiency rating below 80, which, at 71, which qualifies it for highway bridge program repair funding. However, the bridge is, has 100% health index, which means that it's not really that stable necessarily for earthquakes or for the foundation conditions, but it doesn't really require any maintenance at this time. And because of that, Caltrans, the current Caltrans Structure Report does indicate a proposed improvement budget of $2.2 million for barrier replacement, but because of the above 100% health index that I mentioned, Caltrans has not programmed any of this money in the current 10-year SHOP plan, which extends to 2026, so there's none of that kind of funding available for the next 10 years at least. I mentioned the active transportation program funding created 2013, there's been two rounds. I believe your school district has already applied and obtained funding from the first round for improvements to bike ways going for school access. The funding can be used for any of these things that are indicated up here, and includes walkways, bike ways, bridges, recreational, the bridge near the park could be classified in that area as well, so there's combination of uses by the bridge, alternative six, which is closer to the park, that could be part of the competitive process as far as justifying the use of ATP fundings for it. Again, as I mentioned, you can also combine these on the replacement bridge to create a total budget that may be easier to use, depending on the funding availability with the Measure A funds. So there's a number of things that can be considered right now. You have costs in the range of 5.5 to 7.5 million in that range, based on the current estimate for the bridge replacement, which is 26-plus billion dollars. At that, the temporary bridge would be 21% to 28% of that, which is quite a bit, although when you look down the road at 2034, the, because of the usual inflation, historical inflationary rates that have occurred in the past, it could be only 10% to 14% of the 2034 cost if the new bridge is built soon. So Santa Barbara County governments might consider options and procedures which would expedite the replacement of the existing bridge, and we would certainly suggest that. And the replacement bridge with wider shoulders with, that will accommodate vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians, will, may also access some of the ATP funding that's available for bike ways. So we recommend that the county consider that. I guess there are some other things that I'm not that familiar about that have been mentioned, but I guess the county, the Bridge House Shelter is a county-owned facility, which is licensed to Good Samaritan Shelter until 2022. And so what happens when that expires, I don't know, there's an answer to that right now. And there might be a possibility of identifying that, this has been mentioned to me, of funding for free transit fares for those who are leaving and traveling back to the shelter so that they don't use the bridge to access, get across the river. So that pretty much summarizes our presentation for now, it's kind of where we are, and any questions you have, we'd be glad to try to answer. Thank you.
Councilmember Mosby. I've got a minor recommendation, maybe we could help expedite it, maybe we could get ahold of the Caltrans officials at about this time of the evening, we could have them line up and try to cross that bridge by themselves and see, see how lovely it's not. You gave it, you said you're 41 mile an hour, is that what you were saying?
Well, I came across the bridge this evening, and I didn't feel comfortable, and I'm not a slow driver, I didn't feel comfortable going faster than, about 41 miles an hour with the signal light blinking on the other end of the bridge telling me there was a stop sign, stop sign coming up, and in fact, the narrowness of the bridge itself. So how that might turn out, if you actually go back and reevaluate, that 85th percentile might be worth looking at. They didn't actually do that segment, so it's not unreasonable to ask them to check it. You might even want somebody who's independent to check it, because that's the basis they use for the speed limit, that a number of cars that are traveling less than whatever that is, 85% of them are traveling less than that speed, that's the speed that they usually post. And they're very, very rigid about it, actually.
Yeah, I would, not punting or funning, but you know, make that attempt at this time of night to be walking it, you were driving it feeling unsafe at 41, so imagine on that. It's not just, not just individuals at the shelter, we also have a state park down the way, and as people try to diversify in their mode of transportation with bicycles and walking, it complicates the issue, I guess. It's not just the shelter, there is, I think you guys did a count not too long ago, but it does differentiate, there's a state park, a mission down the way, so when that is active, there are a number of people that are also migrating that way. Every once in a while, you see somebody on their way to Beelton riding that way, so it's not, relocating the shelter wouldn't completely resolve the situation, but try passing that when there's a tractor or some other thing coming on that bridge and you complicate it, or maybe we get the Caltrans guys to come down with their wives and children in strollers and say, I've seen that a number of times, where moms with their childrens in strollers coming in about this time of night, crossing that.
Oh yeah, traffic calming of any type, to me, seems very reasonable, and maybe getting them down here at this time of night to take a close look at it might be a good idea.
Not driving, walking, let's let them try to walk that, because I just, it is the main way to cross in and out of town, just a suggestion, that maybe we could try another, call it an emotional study, but let's try to, let's try a modified study with them.
Councilmember Humdol.
Question, a couple of questions I have, one is that we've had problems getting money out of Caltrans for the Lompoc Bridges for 20 years, and you know, we know what's coming down the road, a major rainstorm, and the river has not been cleaned either, we've got trees and everything else coming down. What if the bridge is taken out this year, you think Caltrans may rebuild it quicker?
Well, that's, it's their highway, and I would think that they would, if it was taken out.
Maybe we should pray for a lot more rain than we're gonna get, but along with that, SB CAG kept diverting money from every place except Lompoc. They went, took what they did to Santa Maria Bridge, and what went down South Cal, and the roads down there, so they've maybe been alternating a lot of the money that's come in here for, at SB CAG, because it got outvoted with Santa Barbara and Santa Maria sitting on that board. So I think, yeah, I love your report, I think you did a real good job. Only other question I have is that we ever, on the end term, because of the people on there at night, and it is scary driving through there, is there any way to get Caltrans to put some lights on there so at least the people can see who's going down there?
I think I'll let Mike answer that for you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if there's any way we can force them to do anything. It's their facility, it's their responsibility. We've tried to bring it to their attention as much as possible.
Can we pay anybody that died from hitting by a car on that bridge, that they're liable and responsible for their death?
Well, I mean, I think that's, I don't know who's liable and responsible, but it is, it is a Caltrans-owned facility, it is not in the city limits, it serves the city, but it is, it is not a city facility.
Yeah, I know that, but it'd be nice to put them in liability.
Councilmember Mosby.
A question with this slide here, is we're looking till 2034, it'd be $52 million. Why are we waiting till 2034 if it's gonna go up roughly doubling in price?
Well, this isn't, this isn't us waiting, it's, this was included in the Measure A program, and even at, even at $26 million, it's still, it's not fully funded in the Measure A program, it's only...
What is the funding amount?
It's funded at $8 million in Measure A, so...
Okay, so if we, if we wait until 2034, we'll get $8 million, but it's gonna go up $26 million. Why are we waiting 20 years?
Well, it's not, again, it's not, it's not my call, it's, it was identified as a need in the county for the Measure A program, and it was identified as a, as a project.
So if we wait 21 years...
But the idea was to partially fund it with Measure A and go after grants, and the idea was that those would be available in the future. Whether or not they will be is anybody's guess.
Right, so if we, if we wait, and of course, there was talk and communication of maybe bumping down to 2036 or 2038. At one of the SB CAG meetings I went to, there was, there was talk because there might be more important issues down at Santa Barbara they're gonna take care of. So, but if we wait 20 extra years, and we use this $8 million that's set aside of Measure A funds, it's still gonna cost us 18 million more dollars?
Potentially, I mean, that's, that's a guess, I mean, that's an inflation guess, so the 20, it was programmed in 2010 as part of the Measure A, it, so the $26 million is the 2010 number, so it's already five years old.
Okay, just, government math is sometimes a little funny, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, not to mention that we did cancel the crossing on Central Avenue to 246, and that money was supposed to go to this project, but on a different subject to the consultant, if we were gonna go for active transportation program, wouldn't the most viable option for us to apply for that be alternate six, where it would tie into our existing bike paths in the city, et cetera, et cetera? If we were to pursue grant funding, six is the way we would wanna go?
I think any structure that can be classified as permanent and has more reasons to be useful for the bicycle and pedestrians has the best chance in general, and there's a pretty uniform method for applying, it has questions, it has requirements for doing cost benefits, it's all pretty much laid out in the process. So it might be reasonable to go through the process with maybe both options and see how things end up, to actually see how it all turns out, because the Caltrans people, there's a group now that just reviews these applications and makes a decision on who gets the money each year. And I don't, I'm not that familiar with it, other than what I, information I've been given over the phone and what I've read, and the Caltrans is actually pretty, it's pretty black and white as far as the procedure.
So our chances would be really good if we took their recommendation and used the undercrossing?
I don't know that to be the case. The undercrossing was thrown out in a discussion at one time because we were pursuing the signal option as being, something to us looks like calming procedure as well as a safety issue, it's less, much, much less expensive than the culvert, it doesn't have the other factors about the culvert that are deficiencies, such as the potential for flooding, the maintenance, people being out of sight and that kind of thing. So we felt that that was the best option, but based on the criteria... So, we felt that that was the best option, but based on the criteria that Caltrans uses for speed and consideration of these kinds of things, they're somewhat resistant to the idea.
Tomorrow, this is on the agenda for SB CAG. Councilmember Mosby or myself will be there and I believe Mr. Luther will be there as well. Do you plan on being there for the presentation or?
Yes, I've been asked to be there.
Okay, good. So, that's good. You know, I know Councilmember Humdol was sort of joking when he said, hope for heavy rain and let it wash out, but and we don't want it to wash out. I mean, you know, it'd be repaired, but that then would be a responsibility for Caltrans to replace that bridge. Maybe what we should be looking at is having a nice pedestrian bike pathway upwards of seven and a half million dollars. We currently have eight million dollars set aside for the bridge replacement. I'm just thinking this out loud now. So, we take this eight million dollars and set aside for the permanent bridge replacement. We get a pedestrian bike pathway that is going to eventually save lives because it's not a matter of if it's a matter of when that someone is injured and fatally injured on that bridge. And then years down the road, when the bridge finally does give out, Caltrans is going to replace it anyway. So, maybe that's what we should be thinking about. Get take this eight million dollars, get a pedestrian and pedestrian pedestrian and walkway, pedestrian bicycle walkway to save some lives for our citizens currently. And the bridge is eventually going to deteriorate to the point that they have to replace anyway. Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, let me thank you for your presentation because it is a good presentation. I appreciate that and I was sniping at you a little bit, but that's more of other frustrations. But last year, they did a patching on the east side of the bridge. There was was something and it's moving again, whatever it's the bridge is moving or the road coming to it's moving, but the gap between is getting bigger. Something's going on again. But there was a patching last year. Do you know anything why the the patching was done or?
Well, I'm not sure where it was done. If it's off the bridge, it's not uncommon for to get some settlement. You haven't had rain, so you don't have undermining of the impangment, so I wouldn't think that'd be an issue lately. That can change, of course, but I without knowing more about it, I really can't speak to it.
Well, something's it's doing it again because they did a kind of a patch. Well, it took them three times to get it, but it's whatever was there before is kind of coming back again. So, just something I don't know. Maybe we need to look at that and see what that is. Maybe that can compound this report a little bit.
I can only say from my own experience that adjusting roadway approaches to bridges is not an uncommon and there are some where when they were built, it was known that were going to be settlement after the fact on sometimes a continuous basis. And so, part of the process was to go back every some ten, fifteen years and do repair work. That's not uncommon.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Luther, you're not expecting any action tonight, right, from us?
No, it's presentation only.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so what we're going to do now is we're going to go to oral communication. Then, we're going to be moving on to item number eight, which is new business, which is the landscaping for the museum and then we'll come back and do the other items. So, I'm going to open up oral communications at this point.
Ms. Wall, local resident, I was hoping that Paul Hill from the Human Service Commission would be here, but he had a conflict and didn't think he would be able to make it. The the issue of the two forty-sixth bridge has been a top priority for the Human Service Commission to address. A letter was sent to Caltrans requesting that signage be put up there and and they agreed and they did. You saw the signage that was put up there, the little walk. I went out there looking for the signs, knowing that they were there and missed them. I thought somebody had stole our signs. That it's not acceptable. Another letter was sent to Caltrans requesting that a solar power flashing sign be put up there. They didn't respond. When I talked to Paul yesterday, he said they had just gotten a response. Well, they sent a third letter and I believe you all received a copy of it, the City Council, and they got a response about a week ago or so saying that they felt the signage was adequate and they would not pursue anything further. That is unacceptable. The Human Service Commission is, you know, still has that on their agenda to find another way, but it is a matter of time before somebody gets killed on that bridge. And like Councilmember Mosby said, it's not just the shelter. The Human Service Commission has provided bus passes to help, you know, with that and it there's a lot of people using that bridge to cross. You know, some child could be crossing that bridge trying to ride out to to the park. Bikers, you know, more people are biking all the time and they use that that route. So, it's just a matter of time before somebody somebody gets seriously hurt or killed. Now, putting up a flashing sign and it's solar, so it doesn't require any any special electricity or power to be put to it, isn't changing the speed limit which they're opposed to. It's just a warning and the visibility of a flashing sign has been proven to work. It draws people's attention. It'd be great if they could put lighting out there so people could see at night if there's somebody on that bridge, but that's a nominal request. It's an easy fix that can be done quickly to draw attention to people crossing that bridge and encouraging people to slow down. And I would ask when you have your meeting tomorrow with SB CAG that you speak up for Lompoc. We always get the short shift. We need to speak up and insist that we get our fair share. Everybody is very aware of that bridge and the problems on the bridge. Everybody in the county is aware of that, so I would ask that you be a little bit more demanding in your meeting tomorrow.
Thank you for your comments.
You know, Ms. Wall, I think the only thing we could get Caltrans to do is put a roundabout on Sweeney Road there.
Okay, next, please. And just so everyone knows, every council for as far back as I can remember has been trying to put pressure on them, but Caltrans is a very stubborn organization and they really do as they choose, but we're definitely going to try. Yes.
Well, I also wanted to elaborate.
Please state your name.
I'm Sylvia King. Elaborate on on this bridge. If nothing else can be done, can we use common sense? Can the city have any kind of influence on at least putting up some solar lights? In this day and age, solar lights last at least three or four hours that can illuminate each side of the bridge so that people can be seen. My daughter called me yesterday. She said, Mama, nearly hit somebody and it was total darkness and people are dressed in dark clothing. If we could have along the the two feet that people have to walk, if we could at least have reflective tape stretched along the bridge and a couple solar lights on each end to illuminate people walking, I mean, that would maybe not take more than a thousand dollars. And in this day and age, I think common sense needs to prevail rather than million-dollar projects.
Thank you. Thank you. Next.
Mayor, City Council, staff and citizens, I wanted to just come.
State your name, please.
Oh, sorry, I'm Sue Copeland and I just wanted to come once again to encourage you to continue working with the California Space Center Group and Eva Blaisdell. It's my understanding that she has turned in information requested and I would like to also ask again that we have an open forum, a public forum where the council, city staff, Eva Blaisdell and her group and the public join together as in one meeting, open forum, where we can discuss what's happening because it's sort of confusing, you know, who says what, you know, what's going on. And I think that that would be much appreciated for everybody. I think that it's really important that we continue working. This is number three for the Space Center, trying to get a Space Center here and I would hate to say that three strikes and we're out. I don't I'm not sure if anybody else would be willing to come and try to put a Space Center in if it doesn't go through this time. And I think it's really important for the economic vitality here in Lompoc and an awesome opportunity for our children and our community at large. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff and residents. My name is Frank Campo. I'm here to speak on on two issues. First, I guess I'll do a happy issue. I'm the Vice President for the Board of Directors for Valley Haven Adult Day Program and we are going to have open house this Saturday at our location. That's five oh one North Third Street. It's the old birthing center, so some of you old time residents might know where that's at. If not, it's the white picket fence on Maple and Third Street. But we received a hundred thousand dollar grant from SB CAG from CDBG to redo our sidewalks and to do our landscaping and it looks really nice. So, I'd like to invoke invite the whole community out between one and four on this Saturday to see us and we've also been approved to be on the hospital tour for the Christmas tour of houses, so we're excited about that. On the second issue, I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Good Samaritan Shelter and you know, I know I'm preaching to the choir up here and the citizens realize that something needs to be done with the bridge. I just implore you as a board member and a resident of Lompoc, when you go to that meeting tomorrow to kind of get the our point across that one of these days, something is going to happen unfortunately. And you know, they wanted to do the underpass, you know, we're creatures of habit. We're not going to go underneath it, you know, our residents are going to go right across the street, right down the bridge. So, we just hope you'll help us out tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, speaking about preaching to the choir and you are preaching to the choir, I mean, this body up here would do almost nothing short of we want that bridge replaced, but you need if you want to preach to someone, those of you that are speaking tonight, anyone else that is listening on radio or television, show up at the SB CAG meeting tomorrow. Starts at nine AM in Beelton. You don't have to drive to Santa Barbara. You don't have to drive to Santa Maria. Show up at the SB CAG meeting. Show your passion as you are to us tonight. The people at on the SB CAG board are the and Caltrans will be there. Those are the ones that are going to be making this decision. So, mark your calendars for nine o'clock tomorrow morning in Beelton. The address, it's at the water.
It's on Industrial Way just off of the the main highways you come into town. So, it's like the first street light as you get there. Turn right and it's the first building on the right.
First building on the right, yeah. Industrial Way. Yes.
Janelle Osborne, Chair of the Economic Development Committee and Member of the Lompoc Creative Crossings Project Committee. I'm here to remind the public that Phase Two, as Joanne Plummer mentioned two weeks ago, for the crosswalk competition is open. We are putting in two additional crosswalks at North I Street and Walnut Avenue. There's a five hundred dollar honorarium for those that win the selected crosswalks. The artwork is due by November fifteenth. You can go to healthylompoc.org forward slash creative crosswalks to get all the information. This time around, it should be submitted digitally and if you need to get online, you can go to the Anderson Rec Center and they will have information as to how to get the information as well. So, again, deadline for the artists to submit is November fifteenth and go to healthylompoc.org forward slash creative crosswalks to get more information and submit your designs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication and come back to we're going to go to item number eight under new business. This is a memorandum of understanding for the landscaping at the Lompoc Museum. This is.
Good evening. My name is Don Adams. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of the Lompoc Museum. With me beside me here is our Director, Dr. Lisa Rankin. We also have another board member in the audience, Alice Down, and we're here to seek approval for the memorandum of understanding regarding replacing the landscaping at on the museum property. Okay, back in two thousand and twelve, we presented this the council a conceptual design that was produced by a landscape architect for us and it was generally well-received. I know there's two new members since then, so we'll give you a little overview of the overall design and just a few pictures to kind of familiarize you with the various pieces of it. This what you see before you here is it gives the story on the left side of what we're attempting to do. We've accomplished some of this already, however, let's see if I can make this. The three components were that of the design, the drought tolerant design for Stone Pine Hall. Stone Pine Hall is this building south of the museum. Here's the museum and this is Cypress and H. That property belongs to Lompoc Museum Associates, not the city. We own that ourselves. We purchased it back in two thousand and three and we have it. The design you see before you here is a general design and we have gone ahead because we own that property and in the last couple of years, we've renovated Stone Pine Hall and in conjunction with that, we've also upgraded the landscape, which we will show you in a couple of more slides. That's part of it. That's one-third of it. The part we're going to be addressing next is the Victorian Corner, which is the area surrounding the Carnegie Building. That's the the first order of business, but that is city property and therefore we need the memorandum of understanding so we have an agreement so that we can begin to do things with city-owned property. The third segment component is what we refer to as the native native garden, which is essentially over on the east side and actually the this plaza, a little mini plaza here, which is currently that's the World War One monument, the flagpole base. That's considered to be the formal entry into the native garden area, which we intend to create. These three areas and you can read the the last paragraph there gives you an idea of what this overall project will accomplish once we get there. We have a ways to go though because since this was presented to you, we at that time had a grant application underway to do much of the hardscape of what you see on the screen and that was not successful and so we've had to to kind of regroup and begin to look at it in pieces to do it incrementally. We in conjunction with, let me go to this, in conjunction with a an upgrade and renovation of Stone Pine Hall, this is the building that sits to the south of the of the Carnegie Building. This is the one that we own. In conjunction with that rather extensive upgrade, we included the landscaping, which you see on the right-hand side. The it's went quite well. It replaced some rather old plants and if you've been over there, you've may have had a chance to see that. So, we've gone ahead with that because that was our own own property and we didn't need the city's agreement to complete that. The the next increment, once we get the memorandum approved, is to proceed with a Victorian, what we call the Victorian Corner and it's the area surrounding the Carnegie Building. And this diagram here shows the the land, the design, the detailed design that we have come up with for that. This is the the front entrance here, so this would be H Street and this is Cypress on this side, but it provides plants, new plants, all completely around the Carnegie Building. And then the third, what we call Phase Two, that would be Phase And then the third, what we call Phase Two, that would be Phase One, the Victorian Corner. And then Phase Two would be the Native Garden, which is essentially primarily the back, what we call the back lawn of the museum property. It's been used for a number of things and city events over the years. And we can go back to, take a look at what that, I'll go back to the original one up here. That's this area over here. And that has a number of interesting features, which if you have, if you have the materials, do they have Exhibit A of, Patrick? Any of the attachments? Do they have the actual document and the?
I believe it's included in the staff report, yes.
Okay. Well, there's a larger view, a larger printout of that original preliminary design. And that's what will be the Native Garden. Now, we'll go back to, I guess, that's... And it would be beginning, as we say there, it would be, once we get the funding for that, and after we've completed Phase One, the Victorian Corner, we would be looking for funds for that. In terms of funding for the Victorian Corner, I'm going to let Lisa talk a little bit about where we stand with that and on that part of our project.
Hi. So the, whoops. Okay. So right now, we have $2,000 we received from Hay Bales and Cocktails a couple of years ago that we've been keeping for the Victorian Corner. The estimate that we have from the designer who gave us this new design currently is that the entire cost would be just under $6,000. And we've been, one of our members has just approached us about donating some stock that she thinks will probably pay for the, may pay for the balance of that. This is, we call this the Victorian Corner because, of course, of the age of the building, 1910, 1911. Also, if you're thinking Victorian can be thought of as, you know, very regimented, very formal. And, but we're looking at the Victorian, the more country aspect, and it's, the emphasis is on color palette. So creams, lavenders, purples, that thing, that detail. These are going to be, they're all native plants, and so they would require minimal water as also maintenance. And that's the whole idea. We want to freshen up the landscape. We want to make it more, to educate people on the history of the Lompoc Valley and its plant use. And one of them is going to be, this area is the Victorian Corner, which is the era of the building. And Donna was mentioning, so the Native Garden in the back, that preliminary design, that was a conceptual design from a couple of years ago. We are not expecting to install that exact design. We're probably going to have it a little more simple, but it's going to have signage. And we're especially thinking of that as part of our school tour program, where we have all the third graders in town come to the museum. And so this is going to be one more aspect of the tour. It would be them getting to see the actual plants that the Schumash used, how they used them. There'll be permanent colorful signage. Also, one last thing, and I think it is on the, probably the front page, the first page of this, is that we really envision this as a, to create a, kind of a destination for not only locals, but visitors also in the downtown area. Place to have your lunch, you know, there'll be benches and things in the back, and a place to relax. And it'll also be educational, though. You'll learn about native plants. You'll learn about the Schumash use of plants. The long history of flower seed industry in Lompoc probably would be a component of the formal entry. So we're asking for the MOU because the two last pieces are on city-owned property. And so this is the first phase, as Donna told you. And then, once complete, we would move on to the second, which would be the Native Garden.
Might mention that one of the main features and benefits to the city is that the museum associates will assume responsibility for maintenance of the landscape. The only responsibility the city will have would be maintaining grass and blowing leaves. Plant maintenance would be our responsibility in the future.
And they would, I believe, and also part of it is, the city would be removing perhaps bushes, not the turf for us, but they would provide some of the removal of that. And obviously, also, when irrigation would be put in, you know, we would be consulting with the city, who knows where the existing lines are, to help the landscaper with that, during installation.
Installation only. So with that, if there are any questions about the MOU, we'd be glad to attempt to answer.
Well, I had one about the Achillea melifolium. No, I didn't. This is very intricate and very detailed. Thank you. Off the subject question, the World War Monument or the old center flagpole, is there a restoration going to happen on that later or preservation?
We don't have anything planned, other than the little mini plaza around that. Right now, it's just sort of random plants, I suppose.
But it's been cleaned up. It's, it...
Yes. It's better than it used to be, but we'd like to, we'd like to highlight it by putting a little low wall around and a...
Right. I noticed at one point that it was starting to come apart, and somebody had gone in and banded it, but...
Well, that was because of the flagpole. The fear, I think, the city took that flagpole off because the fear was that it was moving too much, and it might fall over. And so they did put some kind of metal strap around it. I, this is not the museum board. Personally, I wouldn't suggest putting another flagpole in. I think a life-size eagle on top or something would be nice. But we, I don't know, you know, that's, I guess that's, is that city-owned monument? Because it's on city property, it's the, what, the Civic Club who put that, who donated that to the city. So...
So you guys don't maintain, and we aren't maintaining?
We don't maintain, no, we are not maintaining that. I, and someone who knows more, I wouldn't think that since the flagpole is gone, there shouldn't be any more deterioration. It's not like we get freezing rain or anything here that should be damaging it further. But no, we don't do anything with it.
Depends on whether you consider that monument to be part of the landscape or not, I suppose.
Councilor Mosby.
In your MOU, you have the city paying for the waiving of permits. Do you know what kind of permits you're looking, I mean, is there something?
Not particularly.
I just, it just, I just wondered if there's...
It's a catch-all.
It's a catch-all, kind of.
Well, I usually would, you see that, you want to know what it is. If we're waiving something, I don't know if there's some big...
If they're permitting requirements to rise.
In case we encounter anything, the city's saying that the city's willing to pick up the price for that.
And I understand, that being city property, you think it'd be that way. It says right here, "Other support from the city shall be limited to the demolition and removal of existing trees, bushes, shrubs, but shall now include the removal of grass or turf." Which trees are you guys looking at?
Certainly not the olive trees. They're not going to be removed.
That was one of my questions there.
No, no.
We're going to try to restore those. We've been told that those can be trimmed properly and survive, but it would be the smaller, smaller.
And trimmed to keep them from falling into the gutters on the top of the museum, too, which is always our concern with the rainy season and everything. So, you know, I don't know, there's really no trees. The privet trees were taken out a number of years ago because they were really, I guess, hyperallergic. People are really allergic to them. So those were already taken out. And there's only a few trees. I don't know how you pronounce the Cotneyster, or... And those, we'd probably leave. There's a beautiful one. It's not native, but it's a really nice example. The one that's in the parkway on the side on Cypress, I don't think that's part of the design because that's in the parkway. So it's really more the shrubs, you know, that would be taken out.
Large shrubs and things like that.
Right.
And what is the total cost of your project, do you think?
Well, we've been told just under $6,000.
Well, that's for the Victorian.
Oh, for the Victorian, yeah. I mean, for the entire one. Well, we have not commissioned a new drawing. Originally...
Are you talking about the new?
The Schumash, are you talking about the Native Garden?
The total, the whole project, yeah.
Remember, the original price was...
Yeah, the Native Garden, when we went out for the grant application for the, just the hardscape, it was about, just under $75,000. And that was the one, the one that got turned down. So, but that did, that included just hardscape, and it was, the main expense was the hardscape.
And my suggestion to you is that we don't, there's nothing in the MOU that's basically performance-based, is that you guys make sure that you, you know, don't get the cart before the horse. I know in nonprofits, it can be difficult, and you want to get motivated, and you start. But, you know, a staging aspect in there, I mean, I know, and the number of the MOUs I've been involved in, where definitely had staging aspects in there, so that the money was set aside before you went to Level One, and you went to Level Two, you went to Level...
Well, we have a, like, I think there's a two-year, that we have to complete it within two years of securing the funding for it. And so we, I don't think we're very far from securing the funding for the Victorian Corner, so that it's not as when, in our talks, so that, you know, we don't have it partially, the city removes the bushes and things, and then it just sits open. That's not going to happen. We can't give you a end date as far as when we expect it all to be done. But the, one of the benefits of dividing it up, we've shown we can do Stone Pine Hall. That was part of a grant. That was the landscape. And now, if we complete the Victorian Corner, which we expect to fairly easily, quickly or easily, then that is a, helps us going out and getting funding. And also, the last part, the Phase Two, would be the Native Garden. And that's much a focused area, and it allows us to go out to, you know, certain sources that would be more likely to fund that.
Right. And there's also the possibility that we have, have to break Phase Two into sub-phases because of funding problems of maybe have...
Yeah, that's why I just get concerned. There've been, some things have started, and then they, you know, they didn't have all the funding, and you hate to get to that point. Sometimes some of your big drivers and stuff are there, and then, but I didn't, I didn't notice that you had something in there. Is there a phasing? I didn't go to the last page.
I can tell you pretty confidently, the museum board never doesn't overcommit or get too ahead of ourselves.
We need the money in place first.
Yes.
Questions?
Okay. I think Mr. Ishawata has something to add here.
Good evening. I just wanted to ensure everybody...
State senator.
Dirk Ishawata, mayor, council members, citizens. We're not planning on removing any trees, excuse me, at the museum. We're just going to do a lot of trim work and take out some bushes and stuff. But aesthetically, the trees that are there will remain there.
Okay. Anything else from the council? Questions? Okay, let's go to the public, then. Anyone from the public want to speak on this issue? Seeing no one rise, let's bring, come back to the council. Discussion, motions?
I'll move we approve the memorandum of understanding with the Lompoc Museum for installation of drought-tolerant landscaping at the museum.
Okay. And then we also authorize city manager to amend, let's see, unauthorized budget adjustments. So maybe you just want to, maybe you just want to go with staff recommendations.
I'll go with staff recommendation.
Okay, good. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and make it look beautiful. Okay, we are going to try to catch up now. We're going to go to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'm going to transition over to do a presentation from the podium, but first, I just wanted to announce, if someone did comment on it. Indeed, the deadline for the California Space Center to respond to the notice of default and to provide the anticipated responses and to cure the notice, the deadline was yesterday. And indeed, we did receive a response from the CSC. So over the next two weeks, the staff and the city attorney will be reviewing the, what was submitted, and processing that with anticipation of presenting to you the information, findings, and our estimation of the materials at the November 17th council meeting, two weeks from now. So just wanted to let you know about that. And for the other part, I'm going to transition over here. Thank you again, Mayor. I want to take some time to discuss an issue of what I'm encountering involving our different committees, commissions, boards, that where we have citizen involvement in helping within the governance model of the, of the city. And I'd say, we're blessed here in Lompoc to have the level of citizen involvement that we have. We have quite a bit, quite a bit more than we would see in a lot of other cities. And so I don't want anything that I'm about to say to be misconstrued or misinterpreted as being that we don't appreciate and applaud the citizen involvement that we do have. I will point out, though, that this first slide that I have up here is what I'd call the classic structure of governance for a, for a city. And you can see over here, this is you, the city council, and you provide direction to me, you provide some direction to the city attorney, giving us both your understanding of your policies and the priorities and how you want things carried out. We work together, obviously. City attorney's providing legal opinions that, to me and to staff through me, also providing it to Planning Commission and to you. And, but this is the way it flows. You set the policy and direction priorities. With those marching orders, I'm directing staff, and staff's carrying out whatever, whatever your priorities and policies are. Now, I point out here about the Planning Commission because that is a citizen involvement that you see in classically in just about every city. You'd see this sort of setup. And that's why I depicted that in red, is to show, well, here's an example of citizen involvement with the Planning Commission, and that you'd encounter in about any city. And the arrows are important in all of this, by the way. What I'm pointing about, the arrows, is the instruction, in this case, comes from the city council, the city manager, city managers giving direction. And then, like in this case, in dealing with the Planning Commission, we see city staff, then, based on all of that, is presenting workload, if you will, to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission, because it's this quasi-judicial body, does have some empowerment, and based upon its actions, actually, that does lead to be some level of workload back to city staff. But that's this, this is the classic structure of how a city governs. So the next slide that I want to show you is how Lompoc is configured. And we've got quite a bit more arrows going on here. You can see a lot, lot more bodies that are, that are going on in this case. And while this is the Lompoc structure, I still consider this manageable. But it's manageable if it's done in the correct manner in which it's designed. And again, the arrows are important here. By design, what we should have is, again, city councils giving the direction, city manager and city attorney, city attorney's providing its advice to the city manager and to staff and to Planning Commission. It actually, many times, sits and advises Planning Commission. But ultimately, the city attorney can provide some guidance and advice to any of these, but generally, they are not there at the meetings. but generally, they are not there at the meetings. I've, I've listed up here, in addition to the planning commission, we've got twelve other committees or commissions that are listed up here. I've actually omitted a couple of them, only because we have a couple of committees where we actually have staff as members of those committees. One of them's the oversight board for the successor agency of the RDA, and one's for the compliance committee. Some, because that involves staff, I'm just trying, trying to get the focus on our, our process here and the involvement of the citizen, the citizens. And the, well, the one other thing I want to point out in this configuration, you'll see the number one appears a lot, and that's to convey to you how many entities we're dealing with in each case, because this is important by contrast to what I'm going to be pointing out shortly. But there is one city council. I know there are five members of the city council, but in terms of who sets policy and who provides direction to the city manager, to the city attorney, that is one body, that being ultimately the majority of the city council, but the city council is a singular unit or body, as is the city manager, as is the city attorney. And that's important to point out about each of these committees or commissions, they are one body. And as you can see, those, the way the arrows are supposed to flow is you're setting, you still haven't relinquished your role of setting policy and priority, assigning that, giving that to me, I direct staff, and then, based on whatever roles you have for each of these bodies, staff is then taking that workload out and presenting that to each of these committees or commissions. Now, just for quick contrast, I know we're not Fresno and we don't want to be Fresno, but a lot of times I get asked, well, what do they do in other places? So, I could talk about Fresno because I spent a number of years working there. And this is the structure that they have there. So, we've sort of got the classic structure with the planning commission, and then they also have a bike and trails committee, and that's how we get some citizen involvement. And, and again, they're an advisory, it's made up of some people that actually use the, the bike lanes and trails and help give advice and direction to city planning and to public works as to how to lay out those systems. So, I point this out because we don't do this because we've grown to be such a big city that needs this much to be able to manage the city. Fresno's a city of over half a million people and one hundred and ten square miles, and this is how they get their part done. But again, we're blessed, we've got lots of citizen involvement, this is what ours looks like. Now, I'm going to, I've changed some numbers here, this is the same thing that we saw a couple slides ago with our current setup. And the reason I've changed the numbers, and now you see some different numbers in yellow, merely that's showing the number of committee members on each of these various committees, commissions and the like. We're still one body, it's the city council, city manager, city attorney. And we have a great number of individuals, even though they're one body, this is how many individuals each one. And why this is a, a critical thing to make note of is, one of the reasons why I'm even having this presentation with you. What I'm beginning to encounter is something that's going to, that if it's allowed to continue, would make it unmanageable, and that is that instead of the arrows just being as they're laid out where we can carry forward and, and do work assignments that way, what I'm encountering and finding in some of our committees and commissions is that we have some individual members that seem to be taking the liberty of wanting to create and pursue what new assignments would be for staff. They are coming up rather than getting our, only getting our direction from city council, we have some individuals that are pushing forward some, or attempting to push forward some initiatives. And if we allow that to continue, this now will be what the governance model will look like. Because now we've got ninety-one different folks that are out here as members of these various committees and commissions, that if we allow it, any one of them could then be making assignments back into the city staff. Now, you can see already back here, this is difficult enough, it, it's manageable, but it's difficult enough to manage because I point out that, for instance, with city council, we have to do all the Brown Act compliance, we, we put together the agenda, we put out the staff reports, and we produce minutes, all of that also has to happen with each of these committees that's meeting. And so, a lot of times we'll have staff that's staffing multiple committees. And that, so, we can still manage it, but, but whenever, if you're ever wondering, well, how come things are a little slower, you know, it's taken us some time to get some things together and get them to council, or why it's difficult sometimes to get everything wrapped up way in advance of a council meeting to have it all available, it's because we're repeating this over, not just for one body, but now at that point for like fourteen different bodies. But when we get to this, as, as I've labeled it here, this becomes unmanageable. We cannot, first of all, there can be conflicts going on between the city manager's assignments to staff and what would be others' individuals' attempts to make assignments to staff. And so, what, why I'm bringing this up is to alert you to the situation, because, as I said, this is unmanageable, this will not work, and so, I'm nipping this in the bud. And part and parcel of that is, with some of the situations where I've already got, where I've got individual members that are basically attempting to make assignments to, to committees, I, my instruction to my staff has been to stand down, they are not to carry out those instructions. I've reminded them that I make the workload direction for all of the, for all of the staff, that is my role, that's certainly our understanding, both within the, the city code and within our contractual relationship. And so, this isn't going to work, and as I said, so we're putting an end to it. Now, I hope we can do this pretty easily and get this all back to where it's supposed to be, back here, to something, again, that we can manage, it's, it makes it complex and work-intensive for us, but we can manage it. And again, this is how we make best use of the citizen involvement that we have and the people who want to help out, is if they're showing up to help and they'll receive the assignments and they'll, they'll weigh in and give their opinions, that's certainly coveted and desired, we, we just can't have new, new programs, new initiatives being directed from ninety-one other points. In my faith, the book of my faith has a, has, has a quotation that says, no, no person can serve more than one master. And that's what we're trying to keep in place here. It, it's practical and spiritual, but it's also very relative in the workplace, in the real workplace. So, we're putting a stop to this, we got the beginnings of this, of this happening. Part of what I think needs to happen, what I'm going to be looking forward to working with you, city council, in the months to come, is to look at each of these individual committees, and we want to, I, I think it would be worthwhile for us to revisit, all of these committees didn't just show up one day, this wasn't suddenly our structure, it accumulated over decades. And I think it's worthwhile to, looking at the picture all at once, is to take a breath, reaffirm, reestablish the intention and the, the mission of each of these committees and commissions, and to reaffirm what that, what, what the intention, what, what your intention, what your goal is in each case. And if need be, to rewrite the charter for each of these, if you will, to make it clear what, what a commissioner's role is and what it's not. And that's what I'm looking to, working with you on over the next several months, it'll be part of the issues I'm bringing forward from time to time and meeting to meeting so that we can cover some of these in bite-sized mode to be able to get through that. I don't think it's going to be a big, long, drawn-out process. I think particularly after we get through a couple of them, it'll get a lot easier for us and we'll be able to get through the rest in, in short order. But like I said, I wanted to make you aware of the situation, I thought it was becoming important enough and challenging enough that now's the time to act on this so that it doesn't end up to this level and extreme. Thank you very much.
Any questions from the council, comments? Mr. Wyman, there, let you come back to your seat, or maybe someone else. There is a technical, an actual difference between a commission and a committee. Could someone address that to us?
Well, you know, I, I had a discussion with the city attorney, he might be the better one to respond. If I understood him correctly, it, it, it is more semantics than it is strict legalism or anything. We recognize the planning commission's different than the rest of them because of its, it has certain quasi-judicial authority that others don't have, and that's why, from my perspective, that looks a lot more like a commission, and those are commissioners, versus others that look to me to be properly titled, the committee or committee members. If I understood the city attorney right, he, he was telling me there's, it's really one, one title's as good as, good as the other, they're interchangeable, it's more about what their mission and purpose is than what you call them. I don't know if you want to expand any on that.
I don't think I need to add anything.
Councilor Starbuck.
So, this is like administrator and manager?
Yeah, in a way, because either title would have worked just fine, and we had already recognized them as being interchangeable. So, yeah, I'd say, on that point, not much different at all.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Councilor Mosby.
City manager, doesn't Parks have a little quasi-judicial as well?
They, they do, as, as I've recently learned, and I think that's certainly the Parks and Rec Commission is one of, like I said, I think it's worthwhile to go over all, all of the different committees and commissions. I, I'm, I, what I was told was they, they have some rate-setting capacity and also some ability to waive certain fees. I'm not comfortable with either of those things. My, my preference, and, and I assume that only came about because at one point some city council decided that would be a good thing to do. It's not what I would advise you as being the continuing method that we would do. I, I favor the city council setting and adopting the entire master fee schedule. Then, if ever you wanted to have a different rate because of something going on, I, I wouldn't call it even waiving fees, but I'd say if you wanted to have a different fee schedule for certain people, so if you wanted to say, to gain such and such a permit, it's this much money, but if you're a, a recognized valid 501(c)(3), this is the rate, then you can delegate to a commission to be the triers of fact, to be the finders of fact on whether or not somebody qualifies for a certain rate. That I'm, I'm comfortable with. But without clear guidelines from, from this body, from the city council, as to when a certain rate is appropriate, I, I think creates a situation that we probably really don't desire, and it would be better to bring those rate-setting functions back here, in my estimation. It's certainly going to be one of the things we talk about as we go through this.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, let's take a real quick five-minute break. A real quick one. Come back to order, and we're going to go on to item number six, which is appointments of council members to outside boards, commissions and committees. As most of you know, we're... of council members to outside boards, commissions, and committees. As most of you know or may not know, we as council members are assigned to outside boards and committees, outside the city of Lompoc. And periodically, especially after an election where we have new council members, we make new appointments. We did that after this past election. It's come to our attention that some revisions, or some revisions need to be made. For example, we're gonna, I'm going to propose one, two, three changes, and with the council's agreement, we'll make this. Let's see, this is the NCPA, Northern California Power Agency, and Tank. It is the transmission agency of Northern California. These are agencies that, City of Lompoc is a member of NCPA, and we provide, or they, we own majority of it, or we own, not a majority, we own a portion of it, and we get a large portion of our energy through NCPA. We get in through hydroelectric, I guess there's a little bit of solar, but, you know, we get, this is mainly in Northern California. And then the Tank is a transmission agency. This is how the power is transmitted down through the power lines. Currently, I am the commissioner for NCPA and Tank, and the alternates are the utility director Larry Bean and the finance director Brad Wilkey. Mr. Wilkey has recently resigned as an alternate commissioner, and Larry Bean will remain as an alternate. However, the bylaws were rewritten for NCPA stating that, in the event the NCPA commission is discussing negotiations with labor groups, contracts, it can only be an elected official in that discussion. It can't be an employee. And we do not have an alternate that is an elected official for NCPA. So I'd like to recommend, since Mr. Wilkey stepped down anyway, I'd like to recommend that Councilmember Humdol is appointed as an alternate commissioner to NCPA, and I'd need a second on that.
And that would include Tank also?
Actually, the bylaws were not rewritten for Tank.
Okay.
So it's really just for the NCPA.
I'd support that.
Any discussion? Okay, let's vote on that. And that passes 5-0. Okay, the next one is, and you've heard us talk about it earlier this evening, SB KEG, Santa Barbara County, Santa Barbara County of Governments Association, yeah. And currently, that is, I'm the commissioner, and Counselor Mosby is the alternate. NCPA creates, there's a lot of outside activity. These binders that we receive for the city council meetings, five-inch binders, NCPA and SB KEG have equal binders. The amount of research that you have to go into prior to a meeting preparation is really enormous, plus the travel. These are, the NCPA is up in Northern California, SB KEG is usually Santa Barbara or Santa Maria, so there's traveling outside the city. It was actually getting to be too much for me to handle. Three of these binders every single month going through it. Councilmember Mosby, who is the alternate, was being prepared for these meetings anyway, in case I couldn't make it. And he has graciously accepted to take over the role as the commissioner for SB KEG, and then I would remain, I would become the alternate. And that's what I am proposing, is that we make those changes.
I'll move that.
And do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, let's vote on that. And that goes 5-0. Okay, so the third one I'm going to make a recommendation, there's another agency, it's called Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control Board, Control District. This commission meets immediately after the SB KEG meeting, and I had commitments that I could not, I was the commissioner, no, I'm sorry, Councilmember Humdol was the commissioner, because of my commitments, I could not attend that meeting which followed directly after the SB KEG meeting. So it caused an issue, it caused that both of us had to drive out of town for this meeting. I had to go for the SB KEG meeting, Councilmember Humdol had to go for the Air Pollution Control Board. So what I'm recommending is that since Councilmember Mosby will be at the SB, or Santa Barbara, yeah, the SB KEG meeting, he will also then attend, he'll be the commissioner for the Air Pollution Control Board, and Councilmember Humdol, since he's already familiar with it, he would become the alternate for that. So my recommendation is that, or my, yeah, my recommendation is that Councilmember Mosby become the commissioner for APCD, and Councilmember Humdol become the alternate. And I'll need a motion and a second on that.
Lucky guys, I'll move that.
And I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0. Okay, so those of us that have just switched, get in touch with the city clerk, because we're going to have to, we will have to resign as a commissioner and/or alternate, and then reestablish ourselves as a commissioner. So work with the city clerk, she'll get us straightened out.
That's your fault.
Yeah. Okay, next we have assignments to the EDC board, EDC commission, and we have packet. Yes, we have, yeah, appointments to fill vacancies for the Economic Development Committee. This is item number seven. Before we get going on this, and we can open up for discussion, you know what, before we get going with this, one of the reasons, or some of the things that have been commented recently is that several members of our council were not members of this, for this council, when we did the initial appointments to the EDC board, Economic Development Committee. So there's a little bit of a disconnect. They had no input into the different commissioners, and I can understand that. So what I'm recommending, we have five openings right now. We have two at-large members, which the terms expire in February of 2018, two associate members with the terms expiring in February of 2018, and one associate term expiring in February of 16. Now, Councilmember Vega and Councilmember Mosby have had no input into this commission. So I'd like this council to consider allowing each of them to make the nominations, one for an at-large full-term, the regular commission, and one for the associate. So each be able to make nominations for two different people. And then Councilmember Humdol, since he has had some input into this, I'd like us to agree to have Councilmember Humdol make the nomination for the term ending, yeah, February of 2016. Now, that doesn't mean that the rest of us can't vote against one of your nominations. If we feel it's inappropriate, we could vote it down, and then you could make a second nomination. So that's the way I'd like to see us go, but if we have comments about other alternatives, Counselor Mosby?
Yeah, just, we have something on the future agenda here to discuss, and it was a council request by Councilmember Vega that we do discuss this, because it's written up here on the page, how does it go here? Discussion Economic Development Commission Appointment Process. So we have something on the table already that says we want to have a discussion of the process itself. So I think one of the recommendations was going along with it, that the appointments did follow the council members. That was a comment and discussion we had, what was it, the meeting, I guess, when Councilmember Starbuck wasn't here. So I think these appointments may be a little premature than what, I think we should finalize a discussion on this. I know it was a comment that was made back in, I think it was February or March, it was brought up at that time, so it's been a point of concern of myself and Councilmember Vega, that we engage in a conversation on this. And, you know, it's taken this long to get it up on the plate, but I actually would like to have this kind of discussion first before we do the appointments, unless there's something that's time-sensitive. It seems like you have 23 members, you got quite a few on there already. If there's something that's time-sensitive and we have to do some appointment, I could see us moving forward with something. But, you know, I have a couple of people who've come to me who specifically, not on this list, who have applications, are going to be turning them in. They would add to this, that personally I would like to have appointments on here as well. But I think it may be a little bit premature, and we should try to get this council request on and off the table before we move too much further forward.
Counselor Vega.
Yeah, I too agree with Councilman Mosby, that I do have some people that are planning on also putting in applications. I'd like to have the discussion that we proposed and possibly defer any appointments until we have that discussion, so that we have the opportunity to allow anybody we may feel that is also appropriate for the EDC.
Okay, we could have that discussion tonight, because it is on the agenda. It's a bullet point, it says, "Discuss changing terms of some or none of the appointees." So we could have that discussion right here this evening. I mean, it's on the agenda.
Again, I have two people who are going to be putting in applications that aren't in yet, so.
Okay, Counselor Starbuck.
Yeah, I might want to just mention, I kind of watched this and saw how it evolved at the meeting that I was gone. I saw it on our proposed future council, and then to have it on the agenda was a little confusing to me. I think that maybe this should tie in directly with the city manager and his going through the various committees and commissions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted, one point of clarification for the appointments for this evening. Two of the associate members, their terms are for 2016. And then further, the memo that was included in your packet was indeed in response to your council request of our last meeting for an opportunity for discussion. As the mayor pointed out, and the city attorney and I discussed, it does allow for some discussion for this evening and future direction, if you do want to have that discussion now. And one more thing I'd like to point out is that in February, we have another, several candidates that will be fulfilling their term and will have several open positions as well. So I just want to let you know that not only are the positions before you open, and they have been open and vacant for quite some time. We have several candidates that have been actively keeping in touch with us about this process, been engaged, come to our Economic Vitality Forum, continue to show interest, and have been very patient in the fact that we've waited until this point to bring this forward, because we had some additional openings and thought we could do this, you know, several at one time. But again, there are more openings coming up. I just want to make you aware of that, so that you realize there is time to continue to bring folks forward that you think are interested.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Starbuck.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up one other thing. When we established this committee, and this was back in 2010, it was supposedly going to be done by council appointment and done with various appointment periods. Certain council members, at that point, would be able to make some three-year, there would be some two-years, so there would be rotation in there. It went way off the deep end, where all of a sudden, we were going to select people out of this industry, this industry, this industry, and that's where things became bobbled and very hard to triumphalfill. And I don't know, I think when we do the discussion on this, that's something that we may want to consider as reforming how the committee is formed. I don't think that it took off real well, as if it was just a mixed group of people that were in there. We were trying to get too specialized and too technical, and I didn't see any benefit in that.
Okay, so I have two members that would like to table this.
Three.
Three, okay. So I need someone to make a motion to table this until a future date or continue it.
The continuums could come along with the discussion. Granted, you said we could do some discussion right now. I really wasn't ready to discuss my thought process on this. I know one of the recommendations, I feel that should, the appointment should follow a councilman's seat. So that is one modification. I believe that there should be there. It's, you know, yeah, you have this, and you have people that are still there. When the other people are gone, it just seems a little awkward. That's just, that was one of my recommendations I had made before. And then have the appointments go, follow under the council members that, to make them directly. So that's, those were the two recommendations that we were discussing a little bit before.
Okay. Counselor Vega.
Yeah, and I agree with that thought process, to have a little bit of accountability to the council, instead of, that way we get a little bit informed, and every other committee and commission that runs like that seems to work well. So I would be in favor of that also.
Okay. I just want to remind everyone that there is, every one of the commissions and committees does not have a direct report on the council. Many of them do, but not everyone. And plus that you have access to every single one, whether it's your appointee or not, you have access to every single one of the commission committee members. If you have questions for them, you have access to them. You shouldn't rely, I mean, I don't rely on just one commissioner that I happen to appoint. As a matter of fact, and I know Councilmember Humdol is the same way, because he's mentioned this to me, we have very little direct input, by our choosing, direct input to our commissioners. We choose them to be independent thinkers, let them make the decisions. We often, we sometimes, not often, but sometimes disagree with the decisions they make on the commissions, but it's a body, we select the commissioners for their expertise in that and their advisors to us. But that's, but, you know, that's okay, go ahead.
You know, and Mayor Lingel, I agree that this is something you guys put together, but I have a different thought process in how we can restructure in our direction. It's all good, but I just think that we need a little bit of a quarter of a turn here. I think that's the reason you said they should be independent. I think that we should be independent also in the way we formulate it, not something that was put together last council. And then we just keep riding the horse, because a couple of people are still here.
Sure. Okay, well, it's, I need a motion, there's three of you, so I need a motion to continue this to a future meeting.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. Okay, so we're going to continue that item number seven for a future meeting. Okay, written communications.
Youth Commission.
Oh, Youth Commission, I'm sorry. Is it on here? Is it on here? Okay, yes, it is. It is item number seven, okay. Okay. Youth Commission. Okay, so any recommendation, there are, how many positions we have open on the Youth Commission? Second to the last page, my goodness. Well, this looks like it's going to be easy. We have, we have one position open, we have one person that has applied, we have Beverly Kennedy, and if, I will go ahead and nominate Beverly Kennedy as the adult member of the Youth Commission.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, now, written communications.
Nothing.
Oral communications, your last opportunity to speak to us for two minutes on any item you so choose. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communications. Council requests, comments, and meeting reports. Counselor Mosby.
Nothing to report.
Okay, Counselor Starbuck.
I have no report.
Counselor Vega?
Nothing to report.
Counselor Humdol?
Not so much to report, but still go back to the bridge. I think that you got a meeting tomorrow, and you ask everybody to go, it'd be nice if everybody in City of Lompoc wrote a letter to the, to their congressman, and to Caltrans, letting them know that people are very concerned what's going to happen in the future, that somebody is going to get hit. We know that, even though we can't guarantee it won't happen. They could at least put some lights on, I think we've been, everybody's trying They could at least put some lights on, I think we've been, everybody's trying to do that, so I think that that's the only thing I wish was away, and maybe what we'll do after you get back tomorrow from your meeting, see if we can put up somewhere people can send a letter to Caltrans, or to who their executive officer is, because they're hard to do business with. They're going to do it, if you remember the roundabout, we tried everything we could to stop the roundabout, but they put it in anyway, and then put a smaller one than what they should have. And so that's what Caltrans does to us continually, and I think that if we just go to hammer them as much as we can from the general public, it'd be a good thing to do, because that bridge is a very concern we all have.
So anything to report?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, I only, I attended many meetings, but there was only one meeting that I attended at city expense, that was the Northern California Power Agency, NCPA. I attended a meeting in Roseville on the 28th and 29th, and I drove my own vehicle, but I was reimbursed for lodging and transfer, and fuel by the City of Lompoc. And that is my report. Let's see, and with that, we are adjourned to the Lompoc City Council meeting of November 17th, 6:30 PM. Thank you for coming.